Well, I gotta give him a minute to tune in here.
Alright.
Whoa, this is The Illusion, reporting from somewhere on Spaceship Earth. I'm here with Craig Foster, professional educator. Is that an understatement, an overstatement?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Alright.
That works.
So Craig and I met during my campaign for city council, and you got yourself on with Santa Monica City Unified School District, and you're a huge education advocate.
Yeah.
So we're not talking to skateboarders today. Alright? We're doing something a little bit different. And let me just get this open so we can read something. If the... Alright, let's see. Alright, now we got the chats going. I think that's, I think we're in. Notell936, are we in? Are we in? Someone on there? Hi Lily. So yeah, we do this coffee talk thing. We kinda have like 200 people usually join me in the morning here, and we're trying to get out of the box a little bit. So I only ask one real question in this whole thing, and everything else is spontaneous after that.
Okay.
What do you think of the aliens?
Uh, I think aliens are cool.
Okay.
I think, uh, I think Roswell's cool. Uh, I don't know. Tell me, tell me more about aliens.
I don't know. I'm trying to get to the, I've gone full circle on the whole thing.
Okay.
I used to think they were out there, then I think they're, I think they're in here. I think the ex, the aliens in our head. You know, that self-talking mind.
Totally. Well, that's for sure, right? We've got lots of different voices in our head. Like, I've been thinking about intuition.
Okay.
There's intuition which guides you to make decisions that you can't consciously make. Like, people who walk into a place and just go, "There's something wrong", and then leave, and then something bad happens. There's that intuition. But then there's the thing that makes you like, somebody cuts you off and you flip out and, I won't say, "I would do this", but you pull them over and you scream and whatever. So you got all these different voices in your head. And to me, the hard part is which voices do you listen to?
Yeah.
Right? Cause your voice goes, "You gotta do this", and on the one hand, sometimes it's like totally cool, and you do it, and it works great. And then the other time, you find yourself screaming at somebody who cuts you off, going, "How did I get here?"
Not Nazi Angelus, really? Other PCH here?
It does happen from time to time.
See, see young ones out there as a human being too. No, that, that's where I've come full circle, is the self-talking mind.
Right.
Seems to, and I know it's not me. I don't know what it is, but it sure appears to be me a lot.
Right.
It's led me down some very interesting paths.
So here's the thing. We've got biology in our head, right? We've got the little bitty thing that sits on your spinal cord, which is evolutionary that, you know, snakes have that. And then on top of that, they got another piece of your brain that like primates have. And then we have the whole brain that humans have. So you, it's possible, nobody's, I don't think, proven this, but it's possible that each one of those brains maintains its autonomy in your head. And there are the snakes going, "Ah!", right?
The old reptilian brain, right?
And then the primate brain is like, "Well, let's hit it. We got a problem. Well, let's see if hitting it helps." And then there's the human brain that's like peace and love and light. So those brains, you could say those brains are all sort of talking to each other, trying to work it out. And I think part of our own personal evolution is figuring out what voices to listen to and how to, how to, cause I think they all help. I think you need the runaway brain when it's time to run away. Then you need the human brain to make the peace afterwards. So to me, trying to figure out when to listen to each brain is the hardest part. Though, what I'm really working on though is how to listen to that positive intuition. Cause I really do think that's better than any thought I could have, is that voice. And I think of it as, I don't know, the voice of God, the voice of higher power, whatever, of Trump. Cause I think we all have a reason we're here. We're put here to make a difference in the world, a positive difference. And I think that intuitive brain is constantly trying to true us with what we're here to do. Like, clearly you're here to do this. You're here to reach out to people and to teach them things, and to have them thinking about things they wouldn't normally talk about. Like, I'm clearly here, much to my surprise, to work on helping kids not only get educated, but become the best kid they can be.
Sure.
And find that higher power in themselves. And, but I didn't know that. I mean, this all came about for me. I volunteered in a kindergarten classroom to be a nice guy, and the next thing I knew, my wife spiraled. But that, totally, right? I mean, now I got a master's degree in education, I got a teaching credential, and I'm on a school board. Like, I was a retired guy hanging out in Malibu doing nothing 15 years ago.
Oh, really? So the, the master's degree came later?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't, I didn't think I got, what were you doing before you went to kindergarten?
I worked on Wall Street. And as a trader, like buy low, sell high for a long time. And I finally got to the point where it wasn't interesting anymore. So I quit, and I was hanging out here kinda doing nothing. And then my wife and I had a daughter. And then the daughter went to kindergarten. I really wasn't that involved in preschool. She went to kindergarten, the teacher, back to school night, and you've been there, said, "Hey, if you could give two hours a week, that'd be really great." And I'm like, "Well, I got nothing else to do, sure." So I did it, and I fell in love with it. And two hours was four, then it was six, then it was two days a week. Then the next year, I was in the next classroom, four days a week. Then I'm working on my master's degree, you know? And then it was like, do I teach in a classroom? Or do I get on the school board? And everybody around me said, "You're gonna positively impact more lives from the school board than you will in a classroom, so, and you can do that, so you should." So here I am.
So you're a late, so you're a late bloomer too?
I am. Absolutely.
That's, it's interesting, you're talking about the brains and the, the, I, I, the caveman technology of having a child. You know, I, I remember all that stuff of, of this and that. And then you have your little child, and it's, you intuitively know what to do.
Right.
I think people overthink it a lot. Like, it's very simple.
Totally.
And we're hard, like, it was the first moment in my life where I was like, "Oh, this all makes sense now." Like, I've fulfilled my connectivity to the chain, if you will.
But you're connected to those sorts of things. Lots of people, it's super disturbing because it doesn't fit with who they think they need to be at work, and what car they need to drive, and blah, blah, blah. Like, "I need to clean up some poop now", is not normally the first thing on a lot of people's list.
True.
But when it's your kid, it's different. It's love and taking care of that kid, right?
Yeah.
So that also says a lot about your connection to the universe and your connection with what we're here to do. But I, I said the same thing. We went through these, you know, natural childbirth classes and stuff. And the one thing that really stuck with me is the woman around the class said, "People have been having kids for, you know, whatever it is, hundreds of thousands of years." We really, it, it, it's designed to work. The less you do, the more it's gonna work, you know? So it was super comforting, cause they make it so scary. "You gotta go to a hospital, you gotta have this, you gotta have that." And it's like, you know, people have been having kids long before there were hospitals and doctors and whatever. So I'm with you. It's a totally, and then you watch the kid grow up. And it's amazing to see this creature from your, your cells and your wife's cells become this, Mia's 15 and a half now, and she's just this amazing young woman. And, you know, we, because of the rains and the floods, I had this huge pile of towels, cause our roof was leaking. And I found her little, you know, hoodie towel from going to the beach that I forget if it was like a dolphin towel or something, where, you know, she's a little dolphin. It's like a costume and a towel. So this amazing young woman, not very long ago, was the cutest kid in the universe with her hoodie towel. It's like, it's natural, the way they evolve.
It's, it's, you know what? It's got, the one thing that's really got me in touch with is time. How fleeting it is? Like, all of a sudden, owls, three and a half plus.
Right.
Wha, what?
Right.
Boom! And it's, and you notice, the weird thing is, is I'm super conscious and aware, like hyper-aware to like pay attention and be in the moment with them. And I still find that like, it's a blur. Like, right, and I'm like, I know I was very conscious the whole journey, and still it's, I don't remember a lot of it, which scare, like, it's kinda scary on that level.
I mean, it gets worse, right? Cause Mia's 15 and a half, and she's, in two and a half years, she's off to college. And she's not out of my life, but out of my home.
She's doing her thing, yeah.
And that's the way the world's designed, so yay, right? But for me, it's super sad because she's a part of my home family community, and that community is gonna change.
Yeah.
So, and boy, to me, it's sort of like, you know, the minute we get to Halloween, I know we're gonna be at Christmas in 10 minutes. You know? You just look up, and there you are. This, to me, the time that took the longest was getting from kindergarten to fifth grade. That seemed like a long time to me. Getting from fifth grade to today took 10 seconds. And it's just, it's so, you know.
Enjoy my daughter, right?
Pay attention to elementary school, cause that's where it's all happening. It's like, and the love and the scrunchiness and the, just the warmth of that existence is just so cool for me. Which is why I love teaching fifth grade. Cause those are the pinnacle of that.
Yeah, after that, they take a change, right?
Right.
They get it.
And Mia's like, as much as she loves us, her friends are more important. And that's the way it's supposed to be. But, you know, what about me?
What about me? Uh, yeah. It's a journey, right?
Totally.
Journey of letting go constantly?
Totally. And God, and watching her grow and all the influences and all the, and watching her absorb that. And then I have friends. Mia's awesome, and she's self-writing, and so she's really, you know, she's on her path. But, you know, I got a bunch of friends, and their kids are struggling with this or that or the other thing. And somebody said, "It's like having a kid is like having your heart walk around outside your body", right? I mean, the struggles people have to try to launch their kid into the world in a way they feel that is safe and, and is gonna be successful. And I don't mean, six, I was gonna say President of the United States, but that's no longer a model of being successful. But, you know, it does, success doesn't mean you're Steve Jobs. It means you're happy in yourself, and you're settled, and your center of gravity in life's really low. Getting kids to find that is super hard in this world and any world.
Well, right? Cause you went on the journey, you found late in life what was gonna make you happy. It wasn't what you thought.
Totally not.
Cause you came in for the stuff, and the, "I'm gonna do the stuff", and then it's very something else. It's about this passing it on to the, the next generation thing, which is, it's very, we're on the same page, doing it two totally different ways. Cause I'm a big believer in empowering the youth and giving them the tools coming out of the gate with,
Right.
that they can interact right now, that they don't have to wait and figure. I think that it's sort of a, I used to, when I was a tree hugger, I used to call it hoarding the revolution. You know, there's a lot of people that make money off of,
Right.
not plugging people in. Just send us your $25 a month and carry on with your life. And, and really like, and people feel this. I, I remember the finding the interface with City Hall. You, like, everyone's like, "I can't control what's going on in the world", and they see this thing when I, it's, it's right here, and right down at City Hall. Yeah, it's a pain in the butt, and it's a little boring, and this and that. But you wanna watch the world at work locally. It's, it's, it's totally accessible in our society, and we've been told that that's boring and dull. And I think we learned it's, it's not. It's, it's pretty intense, actually.
And, and super important.
Yeah.
I mean, it, stuff happens that matters.
Absolutely.
It really does. And it happens at every level in lots of different places. And you can work outside the system to promote the revolution. You can work inside. But moving to higher consciousness, consciousness, moving to a better world is something not only we can all do, but we, we should do. And like you said, learning where the levers and controls are so you can impact the world positively is so important, you know? And I see it, you don't always know it, but sometimes I, "What did I have?" "Oh, you know, I teach this math class. It's like a problem solving. I try to get kids thinking, you know?" Uh, like, cause they're so used to 432 divided by 12, like, but if you give them a problem where they've gotta figure it out and think and sit with it, and then they get it, you give them tools for life. And a kid came up to me the other day after my class, and he said, "You know, your homework's different from every other teacher. I really have to think to do it." And I'm like, "Thank you. Thank you for that acknowledgement." Cause yes, that's the point.
That's the goal, right?
And that makes it all worthwhile. When somebody says that, I'm like, "Okay, I'm on the right path."
So, education in, in, in our society right now seems to be on a, like, a precipice of sort of what you just described, not thinking versus thinking. I, I, you know, it's, right? Educational standards have fallen worldwide for us. Like, we used to be on the top, now we're slowly falling behind everyone. And, and here we are. It's an, it's a tsunami of ignorance, maybe? And, and here you are, you're, you're right here. And what I think's interesting is you've gone political education. Right? You, you came in as an educator. "I wanna, I wanna educate the kids", and now you've, you've gotten involved with the machine. And, and you're a, and it's like the Santa Monica Unified Malibu School District. To get on the school board, that's like, for a lot of people, is a, a launching mechanism to hire public office. It's not about the kids. It's about, it's a big money school district. "Let's get in there, because then I can get in to be in the state legislature and all these things." Here you are, and I know you've battled heavily to get in the mechanism for like really legitimate reasons.
Thanks.
And what is that? What, what are we looking at with education versus this other mechanism?
You know, there's so-
It's a terrible question.
No, it's, it's, no, it's a great question. It's just, it's, it's, there's so much to it. Like, I, I have a friend whose name is Rafe Esquith, and he was, he won the Presidential Medal of the Arts. The, I think the only teacher to win it. He does Shakespearean plays with his fifth grade kids. And they're, they learn to play instruments. They play amazing contemporary songs. You know, they play Radiohead, and on and on and on. And it's just the most amazing thing you've ever seen. And what he says is, "I never, ever, ever teach to the standards that the state gives me. I teach kids information. I teach kids real stuff, and then they do great on the test, because it, it's like the difference between taking a vitamin and eating a healthy meal. You can get your vitamin B and your vitamin A and your vitamin blah, 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 taking a pill, or you could just eat a really healthy meal with some dark vegetables and some light vegetables and some starch and some, and then you get it all." So I think the, the, the revolution, if you will, that I'm working on is getting kids school that's a healthy meal, the equivalent of a healthy meal, where they learn all the stuff they need to learn. So what does that look like? It looks like you go to school and do real things. You don't go to school to sit in rows. A guy I was talking to, we went to visit a, a school in Santa Barbara, a part of the public school, where they combine engineering, English, and some sort of, I think it's metalworking or something like that. I'm not sure what the academic strand is, but three different things. And they, they create machines that, they create like, like, one of the things they had was this enormous round thing where it had different stations, and you could go and interact with it to get answers to questions. And it was sort of like a, a fun testing, like you put in a museum. You know, you push the button, and it says, "Tell me, you know, how many stars are in the universe or sun?" That's a stupid question, but something like that. So they, they program it, they write the text that goes into the programs and the questions, and they machine shop to make this thing. So it is literally nothing when they start, and they build every single piece of it. And doing that whole thing, there is not 10 seconds spent on the academic standards, but those kids come out and they ace the test, and they are in better shape to get jobs in the world than people who go on to college and study that sort of thing, cause they've had this hands-on experience. So that's an extreme example. But the question is, how do we get kids through this school system in a way where they're enriched rather than broken, right? How do we make them feel powerful rather than feel other and wrong? To feel outside the system? And almost every kid in some way or another is left feeling outside the system by the time they get through a traditional education.
Gotcha. So you're not a traditional education, but-
You think?
Yeah. Well, it's, well, I guess I-
Totally not.
Well, and the weird way is feeling it out, because you're involved with a, a major political entity, right? Which has feedback from public comment, right? You have to, in essence, we have to get you elected to the school board again.
Right.
They could, the way, and I know what you're up against is a very dark entity in Santa Monica politically. They could use, I tiptoned around a little bit to see where you wanna go, because, you know, we've, we've watched it with the school separation and the money. It's all about this money and this power. It's really not about these children. And then you bump into like the California State, and then the federal government, and the standards, and all of these things, where to really be like about education is almost to be, uh, is almost to be pushing back dangerously, cause there's big money, the amount of money involved.
Well, I mean, what's the, what's the number on this? Oh, it's billions of dollars. I mean, if you talk about the Pearson's and the Big Educate, like, there's Big Pharma, there's Big Oil, there's Big Ed. And Big Ed is, I don't know, billions and billions of dollars worth of business. The people who make those textbooks, they are huge companies. And so they are both, I'm gonna say politely informing the government, and then being told by the government. We know there's a feedback loop of lobbyists and what's good for us and what's good for them. When I worked for, I won't say the name, but I worked for a Wall Street firm, God, 40 years ago or something. And we had our lobbyists come around and sit down with me, and I was 28 at the time. And he said to me, "Well, you know, how would you like the laws to change?" And I was a smart, smarty pants, I'll say, uh, at the time, like I probably still am. And I said, "Well, I'd like this", and it was like, you know, heads I win, tails you lose kind of thing. But it was, it was like, "Well, if you can do this, it would be great for me". I didn't care about the universe at that point. And like, a year later, he came back and went, "Okay, here you go". And I'm like, "You're freaking kidding me." Like, I, like, they changed, the entire government changed a law because I said, "This is what I wanted, to make my life better." So if you don't think that there's a linkage between what, and that was me being an uninformed knucklehead, just saying, "How about this? People who actually have intention to warp the world in their favor, you don't think they have the resources to get things done? It's crazy." I mean, you look at what's happened in Washington. Like, imagine, and changing the subject a little bit, but we just did a tax cut for billionaires, right? And my undergrad degrees in political science, like, a political scientist would tell you it's impossible to give a cat tax cut to billionaires, cause they're like a tenth of a 1% of the population. They don't have enough votes to pass it. And the rest of us would be like, "Oh, hell no. They have billions of dollars." And it turns out billions of dollars is more important in our political system than a majority of voters, right? What other explanation can there be for that?
Well, no, it's funny you bring it, bring it over there, it's cause, you know, everyone caught into the, whether it was 6, 60 million here, or 62 million, right? And then you look at the, our population, almost half didn't participate. So who really is responsible for the mess? It's not the people who voted, they're conscious one way or the other. It's everyone who didn't do anything really is responsible for the, you know, when they, when I see the finger pointing, I go, "You guys are all pointing at the wrong fingers." It's, it's the people who were busy watching television and, and not participating that's allowed all of this mess to occur, which is again, my, like, thinking of empowerment is,
Back to education.
Is, is that over there is too big, right? But to actually, I, we've watched young people roll into Malibu City Hall and get stuff done.
Absolutely.
I mean, you look at, you look at, you look at what happened with our fires, right? The, the young kids who stayed back and fought the fire became our kind of like town heroes. And they've got something going
Yep.
that, that is about empowering the youth. And I know you're working with Keegan about the firefighting stuff and the curriculum, because, again, we're, we live in a fire ecology, so, and I think most people don't understand that. Like, it's gonna burn, and it'll always burn here. So we might as well be, get ready for it every time. But that, that's, that's this weird time we live in where, kinda lost my train of thought there for a second.
Where, where, you're missing a whole bunch of the electorate. The people who aren't participating are the people. The system's broken. You can tell because you've got two bad choices. Typically, I don't wanna pick on last election, although, not last election, but the presidential election. You got two choices that really nobody's super enthusiastic about. And then you've got a third of the people, or half the people, whatever the number is, just sit out. And so how do we get to a point where you've got a bunch of people sitting out and a bunch of bad choices? So going back to Keegan, that's an interesting story about how you can make education better in a particular strand. So what we're talking about is if you go to school in Malibu, you really, we ought to start in kindergarten and do disaster preparedness with every child in our school system. So they need to know, and they take it home to their parents, right? They go, "Hey mom, do we have an evacuation plan? Hey mom, do we have a go-bag? Hey mom, have we looked at the fire perimeter of our home?", right? So something that's uniquely, not uniquely Malibu, but it's, you wouldn't do it in Cleveland, but you would do it in Malibu. We're working on how do you get as part of a curriculum, the fire, and it would include fire ecology. It would include, you could even talk about, you know, we've got this whole mess with cow fire and the local county officials, and then our local thing, and then we had a local, local fire department, but they took the darn truck. So we can talk about how political structures go, and we can make meaning in that regard, cause we could at higher levels have a seminar about what the heck happened in 2018 with the fire, and how did it go? So how did it end up so disappointing in outcome? How did it end up that houses were still burning down three days after the fire, two days after the fire? Two days after the fire. So that's a relevant discussion. That creates meaning in our community. But imagine if we could do that across the board. Imagine, like, your boy, I was a boy. Boys do much, much worse in the school system cuz as a general rule. We're like, I'm out. It gets boring, we're out. We're thinking about what we're doing after school. We're gonna go surf, we're gonna go play baseball, we're gonna go chase girls. Whatever we're gonna do, we're out, man. I'm done. So I went through, the irony of my being an educator is I was that kid all through, including college. Thrown out of high school, not thrown out, but they held my diploma in high school. Cuz me and my buddy set off firecrackers in the principal's office, which turns out he didn't like that. It was a graduation prank, but man, they didn't like that at all, it turns out. And the funniest part is it never occurred to me that that would be a problem for anybody. I thought it was funny. I figured he'd think it was funny, but. And I had issues in college and I had every grade from an A plus to a D plus in college. Like what the hell? And yet I'm an educator. And so, but what I found in college is I did. An independent study the fall of my junior, senior year. And it was something I was really interested in and it wove through three of the four classes I was taking. And I knocked the ball out of the park in all the classes. Because I was doing all the extra work and connecting the dots in ways that kids. Who are just memorizing what happened in nineteen seventy-three didn't. So what we need for our kids. So here's another story. So we were talking about that place where they build the machines. So we're talking about this in the school board and we're starting to get the wheel turning at Santa Monica, even in spite of the fact that the bureaucratic inertia is a different direction. Oh, a mom in our school district came in who's a principal elsewhere and she said, when we instituted this kind of learning where it's hands-on. What was fascinating was that kids who'd struggled in school suddenly became the leaders in their classes. And kids who'd been going, I'm getting straight A's, I'm getting straight A's, were like failing.
Sure.
Cuz the skills are different. Everybody needs to know, like, it's great that you're getting straight A's, totally cool. Not the only way to go through life and straight A's will only take you so far, right? And we've got, and so we've got a guy in, in Malibu who's a, uh, on the board of a huge tech company. And he's working really hard to change education cuz he says, we can hire anybody we want, perfect test scores, straight A's, blah, blah, blah. They can't do what we need. We need problem solvers. So teaching kids to study for tests is just not where it's happening. It's part of it. You gotta know your facts. You can't be a computer programmer if you don't do the work. You gotta know the math, you gotta know the language. But the creativity, the inspiration has gotta come from someplace and we're not teaching that as a general rule. That's what kids learn in spite of, not because of their education. Keegan didn't do what he did. You guys didn't do what you did. Because you were trained to do that, because you were educated to do it. You did it in spite of the training, which would have been, the training would be to leave town with the evacuation. You wanna get a good grade? The teacher says, leave town, leave town.
Get stuck in traffic. Well, no, it's, well, I, see, I roll it even back a little further with that whole thing is because I went and got involved. I've always been sort of a little political wonk. But I, I, everyone who knew had been even involved was knew that the fire load back on these, this ridge back here. Was insane. So, you know, when the finger pointing came out. Oh, well, it's all, again, it goes back to, nobody wanted to participate in the local government. So to hold the city manager responsible or Cal Fire or any of these people. Responsible seems a little bit of the, wait a minute, we live in this zone where we stare at that ridge all day long. The fire load up there, I think that was besides Topanga, one of the, the longest non-fire zones ever. So when it got in there. All bets are off. And that's another story with, but it's that thing of participating cuz the maps are there. The fire load maps were there, the, the city knew, the, the state knew, but the city's only gonna do. What they're getting pressured to do. I mean, they can only, everyone's up in arms about the PCH. Ah, the fatal, Emily Shane and the PCH. So everyone's focusing on the PCH. The real danger was up on, on the hillside. You know what I mean? And so we, we, as a community, it's, I think that's where, as I always used to, to joke during my campaign was like, I hope to see. You know, with sixteen thousand people run for city council next election because that's where, it costs forty-five bucks. You go down, you put, you get a foothold in the thing, you get a voice, you get to meet all these people, you have to learn something about. Something in order to do it. I mean, you can go a different direction and just do it, but. You know, you go to some of these finance committee meetings and you see what the money, where the money's going and where the money's coming from and you're like. Wow. And I'm sure you're seeing it in, in the, the school board of like, and I know that's part of why you wanna separate the school districts is. Is the money's not being used and it gets us back to this thing of problem solving, right? That's what the, when now with all the shop classes and metal classes and, you know, all the art and musical instruments we're about. And we've lost all that in modern education, right? Like the, uh.
The, the vast majority of people around the country don't get PE, they don't get music education, they don't get drama. No, they don't. And in LA Unified, PE class is a hundred kids and one teacher. How's that gonna work? Right? They're just freaking running loose on the playground and PE classes like twice a week. It's just.
Really? There's no, there's no more grass stains on the, coming home with grass stains?
Nope. And no more dodgeball, no more getting whacked in the head with a ball. I mean, so much has changed. But they also do things like no more jungle gyms cuz somebody could fall and hurt themselves. So what they're doing is they're drilling and killing. Everybody's sitting line, oh, I started with my story about the Santa Barbara. So that the guy who runs that program says, I walk by, um, the rest of the classrooms and it looks to me like Veal. Everybody's in their little three-by-three square at their desk and they're not moving and they're just taking notes. So, you know, Veal education, another guy calls it cemetery education. You're all lined up like in cemetery plots, ready to die. So you're not moving, you're just getting facts jammed into your brain. But there's all this evidence, like, it turns out. If you, you say you, English, if you double the amount of time a kid gets English. E- English language arts training in school, their test scores drop, not increase, drop. If you increase homework past a certain point, test scores drop. Like too much is too much. It's sort of like vitamin B, you know? One thing of vitamin B is great, twelve things of vitamin B not so great. So the whole food education to me is where it's all happening. Like what would, what would you want, what would you wanted to see differently in your education that would have made it meaningful to? And now you're grown up, you see your life looking backwards. Like what could they have done that would have made the you of today, would have helped the you of today earlier, better, faster?
Well, sure, I think, I think that, uh, I, I look at, I look at my, my journey. Like I didn't find carpentry till I was. Thirty-six. And I stumbled completely backwards, it just randomly occurred. Turned out I had a knack for it. As a carpenter. It, it all made sense. It's a grid, right? But I look back on, on that early education, it was all plug-in to the next. This is what it's supposed to look like, this is how it's supposed to be and. Go to college, do this. I remember dropping out of college. I got, I published a book and I went on a book, did my book tour and we did all our DIY. I learned more than that space of it all. And then I think about when I was in college, so I went to Northern Arizona University, right? And I was on those first waves of environmental sciences. So I was there in the early nineties and I went to study environmental chemistry, right? And I was. I was doing great in school and I remember I was sitting there at NAU, the big environmental science campus. And I was watching them plant perennials. And I remember watching them plant perennials and it didn't make. Because I was thinking outside the box, I'm like, wait a minute, this is a, we're supposed to be planting like. The native vegetation that's sustainable in all, around the campus. Why are they planting? These things from the, the, the market that are gonna die, that don't receive, don't do, they're not feeding. And I, and I remembered this thing and then it hit me, like this big aha moment was. Oh, I know how to read books. And because I can read books means that I know anything I wanna know. Because I can just access a book. Like I, I, like the other day, I'm, since the disaster, me and my buddy are getting our ham radio licenses. Right? But it's a book. You get the book, you read the book, you do the thing. But how your brain gets information out of the book is where the real, you can have a book and hit, you know. It's just one ear out, the, you know, through one eye out the, the other, wherever. You know, so, and but I think, but that's me from going to high school in the, you know, eighties. We're up against a different beast now with these screens.
You know, so we are and we're not, right? So if your goal is, well, look, my daughter's fifteen and a half, like this is. We're right. And you, you know, it, you know, I've had to think about it a lot. And the answer has got to be, you do you. Right? It can't be, and they've done all these studies, Malcolm Gladwell's got a great essay on this. If you are, um, if you're in the bottom of your class at Harvard versus the top of your class at. Southeast Western Illinois University, you will have a better, happier, more profitable life. Being in the top of your class, being a big fish in a small pond than being struggling at Harvard. But that's exactly the opposite of what. You gotta get into this place and, and I, you know, we've got friends and we know, we've got some kids who have just done great. They worked, 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 worked. They got into grade school and then dropped out. Cuz it's not, it's like they get to a point and they can't anymore. It's just, they're done with the repetition. So what, what to me, the future, the beautiful part about how, I mean, look at this, you have a TV network. All to your very own, right? You show up, here we are in your kitchen and you're reaching people and changing the world, totally, right? So anybody can change the world in their own way. Anybody can find a place to be in the world. So to me, the most important thing we gotta say to kids is, you do you. And you gotta get around you what you need to be successful. Part of you, you gotta learn you, which is a lot of trial and error and whatever. But I don't care if Mia goes to Harvard. I want Mia to go where she will be happy and successful. Which will, which will nurture her life for the rest of her life. So she looks back from her deathbed, hopefully four hundred years from now and goes. I lived a good life. And I made a difference in the world. And I love my family and I love my friends and they love me. And the world is better for me being here. That's what we need to be raising kids for.
Yeah, being of service, right?
Being of service.
I mean, that's the one main component that really just kinda falls out the window. It's like, being, being of service to your. However, that may be, it's, you know, I, I talk, talk about a lot, for me, I realize that it's all about the name tags. That, that these people in service industries, where they all wear name tags. And, and the, the name tags there for, so that you can make a, a connection. And be, basically be of service to them and acknowledge their presence in your experience moving through this. Thing. The, the gas station attendant is a real, real living human being. But we forget that, that, that's a real human being. He has a name tag so that, and you can tell the minute you, you acknowledge him. It changes their, their vibe because they're sitting there and a thousand people walk by ignoring them and then you say their name and they're like. They click back in, you know, it's, it's, there's this weird connectivity, I think we're all, we're, we're losing track of. Too, well, I guess why I was bringing up with the, the screens is. The one thing that's, has blew my mind was that they're, they're actually allowed to have their cell phones at, at the schools. And it's, and I, cuz I watched the cyberbully and having real time with, with. My stepdaughter was, you know, it, like the real, the, really, it was really occurring and I was like, wow. And it, it's, she, as, as, you know what I mean? Like as, as a, uh, as a person who's almost fifty, my brain's not developing like that anymore. I can, I can pull in what I wanna have discernment. I, I knew a time before all this equipment. Now you have all these, these young children, they've been with it their whole lives. Their brain is, as the science says, has been stunted, like I, like Owl's three and a half. I am adamantly, I don't see a TV in this house, like I don't, and I can put him next to another child. And I can go television in the house, screens in the house because they can't, he can sit there and read his book and mind his own business and. Do these things and these other, they can't, you know what I mean? And I, and I, I just wonder how much. The screens are as an educator, a problem and not the educational screens, but the handheld distracting screens. The, the ones with Snapchat and all this stuff.
Yeah, man, that is such, I mean, and that's a thing. We're gonna look back on and there's gonna be a clear answer to, but right now it is so hard cuz as Owl gets older. There is connectivity, there is a so, literally a social network through those screens. Like there's a science fiction series that I love, um, and, you know, in the far future and, and these soldiers are all connected by. Brain pals that communicate. And some of them are like born with them. And so they, that is their universe that they can, I can feel your emotion, I know what you're gonna do as you're doing it, blah, blah, blah. And when that gets cut off, it's freakish for them. So our kids are kinda halfway to brain pals, like if Mia can't see. The group chats that are going on, it's as if she was at school and everybody's talking and somebody's plugged her ears. Cuz the conversation's going on and she's either in it or left out. So it's super complicated. But you're absolutely right and keep the screens out of your house as long as you can. Cuz that love of books, I love what you said about reading books, like. If you can read a book, if you know how to do that, if you know to do it, that you could do it. A lot of people don't even think I'm gonna go to library, get a book and learn to do something. Then you can do it. And then you do do it, your life is changed. So many people don't know how to do that. And the more time you spend on electronics. I think you get maybe other skills, but you don't get that skill. And that's so important. So if I had. One thing I could sort of force on everybody, it would be a love of books.
And books are the answer. I, I'm a huge, I'm a believer of the book. And not the, not the Kindle books, the, you hold it. The tactile book. Be, yeah, it's, well, there's the flicker rate and the whole thing. You know, it's, it's interesting was part of, you know, cuz we eventually pulled Georgie from the, the public schools. Cuz of the, the cyberbullying, but also the excessive screen time. Where she would come back and I remember the space where she was, uh, kinda acting out a little bit. And I was like, tell me what your day, tell me what your day looks like at school. Cuz I could tell when she would go to her dad's and the TV's on all the time and there would take, there would be a window where she would like, deep, coming off of it, right? So I was like, tell me what your day looks like at school. And she went in and she told me about how much time they were spending on the screens. And she's like, it gives me a headache, it causes me anxiety. And I was, and, and I was like, wow, and she was. There was no agenda when I was asked, she was telling me about her day. And I was like, the amount of screens in the thing versus, and. What threw me off was the battle with math. Because I'm a pen and paper, a pencil and paper kinda guy. The eraser and, and scratch paper and they were all about the, the whiteboards and the, the. They're doing math on the, and I was like, how does that? Jive with what math really is? Cuz math's sort of, I used to talk to her about it as math's like a constant. Like all these other things are kinda subjective. History is very subjective. That, that's some deeper. Brain power based upon like curriculum and agendas and what people's point of views are. Math is two plus two equals four. And then I always used to hear that weird thing of. Two plus two equals five. They're teaching the kids two plus two equals five. And I was like, that's crazy talk. And then I, I experienced it where I was like, they were doing. I'd just gotten her dialed with multiplication or long division, something like that. And then they switched it to this weird rounding thing, rounded all off right at the same time. But what they would do was they would put the correct answer in there. And it would throw her off cuz she'd just gotten like her head around it. And now they're like, well, round the thing off to this, but. It wasn't, there was multiple choice. So she would get, I would look at the thing and I would come back and I would be like, oh, it's the following instruction thing. Cuz I get made, you know, that thing about the, the hundred questions and it's like, do everything, read it first. Instruction number one is read it first and answer all the questions, right? And then, and then everyone's answered the question, but if you read it first, it says, don't answer any questions. It was like a trick. And I'm like. For someone who is struggling educationally with the thing, that trick centered, it centered off the edge. In, in that sense, it was like she quit again. Like I'd just gotten there and then she came back and I was like, and then it was like so. Like next level, like for a little mind to be like.
It, it, and it's even a little worse than that cuz it's funny, not funny, it's actually sad that you bring it up. But I ran into this too cuz it's, that's a fifth grade thing. So it's worse than that because you're, you're, you're doing like, you're doing decimals. So you're doing, you've learned that you move from fractions to decimals. And you need the decimals to be exact if you're doing division. So now we're gonna go to. Um, rounding. So rounding is like that, but you've got to at some point make a decision about where you stop doing it. Which is connected cuz now we're really just saying those numbers aren't important. Then they do estimation. And estimation is, you're throwing out data. So wait, now you want me to throw out data? You just told me to get it right. Now you're telling me to guess? And it's like, and, and the other thing that's also true is. At, at, at Cabrillo, right? She was at Cabrillo at that point. So Cabrillo has spectacular. Fifth, fourth and fifth grade teachers, they're great at math, they're great at everything. In the universe as a whole. Most elementary school teachers aren't great at math. They're there cuz they love kids and it's finger painting and blah, blah, blah. It's.
It's all.
Squishy, not mathy. So there's another thing that we have, you go from warm and squishy to hardcore math in sixth grade and a lot of kids.
That's when the sixth grade was, that was where it all caught up.
So, um, how you teach that and the mindfulness of when you move from point A to point B. When you move, so first of all, I mean, I'd rather you do estimation. One of the questions we gotta ask ourselves is what's relevant to these kids? And, you know, I mean, I don't need to do decimals anymore, right? You can go, hey Alexa, what's four hundred twenty-two divided by twelve? And boom, you got your answer. Hey Siri. So we're teaching kids, it's like teaching kids how to, you know, make a needle out of whale bone. Like, are you kidding me? Like buy a freaking needle. That's how you get a needle. If you're a, you know, an air force pilot that's gotta survive behind enemy lines, okay, maybe you need to learn to make a needle, but the rest of us don't. So the mindfulness of that and the watching the kids of that is super tricky. You're, no question about it. And that goes back to something you talked about really early. And that goes back to something you talked about really early on, how do you change the system? Like, that's a problem that's only ever gonna get changed if you change like fifteen things first. And we have the same thing with the fires, like we had, there are clearly some things that went horribly wrong in those fires.
Sure.
Um, nobody did it on purpose, everybody had the best of intentions, but yet there were a whole bunch of disconnects that need to be dealt with. We I I say to this people all the time, I only have the cards in my hand, I don't have a fix everything magically right now card. I have a, let's work on changing this chain of command, which will allow us to access this, which will allow us to begin to talk to. So one of the things we gotta do in order to solve that problem, we've got to give, we've got to get different incentives to the teachers, we gotta say. It is, here's another part of modern education, we go from. I sit at the front of the, I stand at the front of the class, I'm the teacher, everybody, all thirty of you, your job is to learn what I tell you. And if you can't learn it, you're a failure and you need to go work in a factory making Model Ts, right? That's the origin of modern education. Is taking people out of farms and making them factory workers or soldiers who stand in line like crazy people and shoot at each other. Like that is not a natural act to work in a factory where you're tightening one bolt on one wheel, wheel after wheel. So that's where this comes from is getting see people to sit and be good, it's a social sorting mechanism. So that's not cool. Flipping it is, I'm the teacher, my job is to find every child in this room and. Help them access the education they need and at the same time see themselves. For who they need to be and where they need to go. That's a huge change in mindset that we need to support, we need to create it in teachers. And we need to hire new teachers who have that. And but first, we need to decide that's what we want cuz we're not all in agreement about that and then you've got parents going, but my kid's gotta do great on tests cuz they need to go to Harvard. And it's like you've got lots of things colliding and fixing those kinda problems is like a one piece at a time. Like, you know, you're talking about, you've gotta build consensus, it's gotta be in the political world, you've gotta have those conversations. And you've gotta consistently with the community with the name tags. Knowing each other and knowing what we're working on and one thing I'm lucky is I have the trust of most people in the community. They come and go, oh, my God, this is all messed up and I go, I know, we're working on it, but it's gonna take a while, we're gonna get to here soon. And we'll get to there a little later. So I mean, changing the world is complicated, man, and that's what you're talking about and the more people who understand how complicated it is. And how the thing works, the better the world's gonna be like people don't get that if they don't vote, they're gonna get the same old crap every two years.
Sure.
So somehow, and that needs to come out of our public education. Cuz that's where most kids get educated.
That used to be the big civics thing was, I think Scott and lost a little. I I get, look, if if I was, if I was the corporations or these power. Brokers, these political power brokers, I would all be about dumbing the population down in the sense of like, no, 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 just go about your business because. You know, it's that, what's that, the the movie with the the ants and the grasshoppers, you know, you know what I mean? Is if the ants really realize that they're running the show, which is the foundation of our republic is that we're, I'm the government, you're the government. We're, we are doing the government's work right here by having an open communication. People realize that cuz it doesn't take a lot of time to participate.
No.
That's what I I I don't think people understand is it's. There's you don't have to, you can put a couple hours in a week down it and get involved with your thing, whatever, I mean, I went in on. I mean, I got involved because some kids asked me to go. Back them up about their skate park.
Mm hmm.
And then I went in there and was like, it just set off a chain of events. That that boom and it really. Isn't that much time at the end of the day, especially it. By the way. Why don't we have a skate parks? It's mind blowing, right? Here we are, it's it's very and we are the city owns that giant piece of land right there.
Hmm. Is that the, yeah, that's, oh, I see where we are. Yeah, that's the one the city just bought. So I mean, one of the cool things about having me on the on the school board and having really escalated the Malibu issues. And now we've got Mikey, we got Karen, like. Um, I feel like we've got a great city council and we've got great communications. I was just at this Optimist Club award ceremony for twelve kids from Malibu who are doing great. Um Karen Farah. Uh Mayor Protam gave the awards, um Mikey was there. Isaac Burgess, who's our local administrator, kinda like our superintendent was there. We're all in communication, so getting a skate park, we're not there, like, man, I don't have that card in my hand yet. But we're all working toward communication about what's good for the kids and let's figure this the hell out.
Well, I mean, I like this is the where I got involved is and I'll tell you what the deal is with like, I'll tell you. So it's the same thing with the ball fields is is we're being used as as political leverage on development deals. That's what was going on. When I got involved with Papa Jackson La Paz. Again, it it was a a political leverage move to get a development deal through. If you check out like the ballparks from city inception. They've been using the ballpark lobby. As political leverage and they still don't have a ball field. And they've been caught up in every bad development deal with any sort of open space. You look at what happened with the Bluff property. That two acres. We were supposed to get, we we had this, we had the plans, we had the consultant in there and what happens? It was used as leverage for the 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 big land thing and then it all got scrapped and now we're stuck with. There's never gonna be a skate park there. Now it's now it's moved over to the 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 property behind the Chevron station. With cuz John and and again, it's it's this thing is they're gonna use us. To do the thing and that's where soap when soap when uh Soboroff had. Cuz everyone gave him a bad rap. And he wasn't, he'd actually let the park be there for a long time and no cost to the city. And then it was used as this mechanism that and again, we were all caught empty handed, the ball field people, the skateboarders that. We're all getting cut because it's all about. Again, inside when you don't know till you get inside the government is who's running the show down there, it's the developers. It's the land developers are getting their thing through, so here, we're gonna use this vocal community, everybody want, who doesn't want a skate park? We'll get them there. They're gonna help us move our agenda forward and then it's just never gonna happen cuz of the coastal commission and the thing is as a skateboarder. Back to your hands on thing is where all the great. Skate parks are coming from is all we need is a piece of land.
Right, totally.
Cuz we're we're all, we already know how to float the concrete and do the thing and again, it's a hands on thing, so you look at like all the big skate park companies now are all. Guys who just DIYed it and took land. Built skate parks, now they have their own, built their own in industries. And they're buying their own houses with something that they were just told you guys are losers.
Right.
So I I I that's where I kinda wanna go with the city is just. I know we got a bad deal with the coastal and the plan and the whole thing, but just cut a huge mechanism out of it and just turn your back. If the city would just give us a square of land and just go. It's over there, I don't know and just look away. We would have a skate park there and then you grandfather it all in after the fact. And cuz that's how they've done all of it up in the Pacific Northwest is the original skate parks is and all these under the freeway things like Channel Street, I don't know if you're familiar with, there's a. Underneath the highway in San Pedro. There's a DIY skate park, they just built under under the highway. And it's grandfathered in, there's a big bounty battle with the city now, but it's, once it's built, what do they say is uh? Ask for forgiveness later.
Better to ask for forgiveness than permission.
So I look at the the, there's a weird thing going on with with. I as I see is a definite need for this community is somewhere for the children to go and play, there's. As as a as a as a father, there is, I have to drive to Thousand Oaks to get my, to have owl ride on the little pump track. I have to go up to Oxnard to cut him loose and. Be in a safe environment with other children, it's, there's a weird. Thing going on and and I wanna just give big shout out to the Boys and Girls Club of Malibu cuz they do great work in this and they get underfunded.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I mean, going back, I saw good news.
I'm monologuing there.
So the good news about being on the school board for me is I don't get involved in city politics, so I'm neutral on everything, I don't endorse candidates. Cuz I've got to be the guy everybody counts on to make sure our kids are taken care of, I can't be in the middle, so I don't know about the details of any of that. What I can tell you from my experience is. There are very, very, very few bad actors, what there are is bad setups.
Yes.
So where things are just not working right, they're not balanced right, they don't flow right. So to me, and this is the again, back to people getting involved in city government. The que- to me, the question is always, don't tell me what I can't do, tell me how I can get this done, like, how do we make this work? And. I really and one of the problems we've had is this because the um school district is governed by a town that's not next door, it's a. A town past that twenty-five miles away. The. Connection hasn't been there to go, what's really important for the kids because it's, this isn't a school district problem, but it is a kids a Malibu problem. So you know, we have dog parks, we have places to go play if you're a dog. But we we but we don't have, we have athletic stuff down at Bluffs Park, which isn't enough for the kids. But and the only park park that I know of is in the middle of Cross Creek Mall. And it's just a couple of swings and some sand, right? So where is that place and we're twenty five, depending on who you talk to, you know, twenty something miles long. If you live at one end of Malibu, you live at the other, it's like hard to come together, it's a funny community to begin with. So we all should wanna be working on how to bring the community together and the best way to do that that I know of. Is through the parents and kids and the best way I know to do that is you take care of the kids.
I'm 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 all about like it all starts from the ground up, it's it's I see the uh. I s- I see it and and that there's just one, I we owl and I used to go kid hunt, we call it kid hunting. We would go look for like kids and you would, I would have to leave because there's just. Where are you gonna go this, we, you know where we go? We go to vintage. I cut him loose on vintage with this little push bike, we meet with this little buddy and they they go and we get hassled by the the groundskeeper and we'd we looked the other way and. But that's, that's our park is some supermarket. It's and you even the one at Cross Creek, it's a supermarket like.
It's funny, you know, I I had thought of this in years, but when I was a kid where I grew up. There used to be this field between where my cousins, around where my cousins live and we'd go play there, we'd play catch, we'd have fun. Well, now that I'm a grown up, that was some guy's lawn. And fifty years later, the guy who now owns it put up a big old fence. No more playfield, right?
Yeah.
So but I'm thinking back to the guy who let us play on his lawn, like, you know, you rock, like, thank you for doing that, whoever you were. But there are some people who are like, oh, and that sweet kids play, it makes my life, it brings joy to my life. Somewhere in there, the guy who put up the fence is like broken, you know, like. Where's the heart in, let's find some boundaries maybe, but let the kids play, like, let's get that joy. Like people are all the time, we go to a a school board meeting or the people who live next door to a school are like. It's like, dude, it's kids, kids are noisy, let them be noisy, like, oh, there's a baby crying in the meeting. Yeah, of course, there's a baby crying in the meeting, it's totally bizarre. It's like, if you're at an opera, you know, in an opera at the Met, okay, you know, no babies allowed, but if you're at a school board meeting or whatever.
Should be babies and kids running around exactly and fussing and doing all that stuff.
So the heart is what's so important, but I think we're all like we're all, somebody said, I think it's really smart, we're all broken hearted. Right, we're all broken hearted. And I would love to see the schools be a place where the kids' hearts aren't broken. The kids' hearts are healed and they have to or they're nurtured, I guess, cuz they're not at that age, they're not yet broken, most of them. But and they get tools to repair their heart and protect their heart, but that's to me, your upward climb is gotta be all about. Um, how you protect and nurture people's hearts.
Yeah.
It's gotta be.
Spe- speaking of, speaking of that, you know, I I I owe you a big apology on that thing. And I was thinking about it the other day, was having this thing, this because I bumped into it myself. Is when we had that meeting at Starbucks and my campaign guy was was trying to strong arm you, that never sat well with me. And I I just wanna publicly in front of my people like, like, like make amends because that was associated with me and I. I'd never liked how that settled and and I really bothered me that they were trying to strong arm you and I was part of that. Madness.
Thanks.
Because you know, that same dude. Tried to strong arm me back recently of something cuz I was trying to plug myself back in and I was like. And it just brought it back home with the ugliness of politics of. It's very interesting how. Power, what do they say, power corrupts, absolutely power corrupts, absolutely type of thing is is to watch. Cuz my first run at City Hall with the no can't, no money, no involvement was very pure. The second one where we got involved with 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 bringing in money and cam- and campaign staff and all that stuff was very ugly. And and it didn't sit well with me and it has never sat well with me in that sense of of. You bring another, they have all these other agendas and you're caught, you get caught up in this machine where you're like. That's not. What this really is about. And I don't know, it just never sat right with me, so I just, I just really, you know, I owe you an apology for that, that was a horrible. Moment at a Starbucks, yeah.
It was a shock for me too.
When he was waving that thing in front, dude, how crazy was that? He's waving that thing in front, we're gonna, and I was like. What is going on here? Like, it was horrible, like, it was a horrible experience.
Well, thanks.
We shared that moment.
Totally, and you know what? And first of all, your heart was always clear to me as being pure and I knew you were a good guy from the first minute I met you and I've always liked you and that never impacted my view of you. So we've been good for the entire time we've.
Cool.
That never, ever, ever was a problem for me. Um, so we're good and thank you for saying that, I know. You know, and it it's so lovely that you do that cuz it lifts your heart, right? You don't have to carry that burden and you don't have to carry that poison anymore. So thank you for sharing cuz I'm so happy that you got that out of your system, but no, for me, we never had a problem, not for a second. Um, so. Um, second thing. That's how it all goes so freaking horribly wrong is it's all me against you and combat and whatever. I try as and and if you're in public life, you're just a walking target, everybody gets to take a shot at you, you know. But you're on the internet, I'm sure there's plenty of people who got all sorts of opinions.
Oh, we could probably look at the trolls on here and be like, they're talking to a hack.
So at some level, you gotta just go, look, I stand for what I stand for and and what I find is the purer I can stay. To the core of what I'm all about, the more the rest of it just bounces off like, you know.
Well, that I I that was the thing I noticed in the deal, you just kinda stuck like, oh, I gotta weather this storm, like, I don't know what's going on here, this is madness. But you know what, I'm just trying to get the like, the schools handled here, people like, but you know what, I'm gonna just thread the path. And you did, here you are, I mean, you pulled it off and. And you're in in the deal, so what's, you got reelected.
I did.
So you're good for what, another four?
Another four.
Another four.
Hopefully, the next time I'm gonna be running in Malibu. For a Malibu school board. We we've got it most of the way there. Um, we, you know, we've got this year, we're gonna try and pull it together, we've got an agreement in principle and. And you know, we talk about navigating this system, right? This effort is at its core, we wanna start fresh, like I take the American, again, fifth grade teacher, American Revolution is the big fifth grade subject, so it all works perfectly. But the American Revolution, we started. From scratch, right? We had no government, we had to figure it out, we discovered political parties, whoa, look at that. We used to be, you'd get to be vice president because you were ran for office, now. You know, you don't get to be vice president that way and that changed, I discovered from Hamilton with Jefferson. Um, so um, it's 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 all about, oh, now it's my turn, Billy, it's my turn, oh, starting, starting scratch. All of a sudden, you don't have to fight your way through all the inertia of all the things and all the people and all the learnings that everybody is hanging on. Cuz one of the things people with broken hearts do is they hang on to what they know. So when and and you can change that and you can hold their hearts and you can move it forward and you can say to some people, you need to not be a part of this. Cuz it's not gonna work for you and it's not gonna work for us. But most people, if you show them the light, they'll move toward the light. Um, but this is like, we're gonna start from scratch and we're gonna have all the technology, the intellectual technology of what we've been telling. The world, the district for ten years, this is who we wanna be. We're gonna take that and like the founders, we're gonna turn that into a bunch of documents, into a bunch of actions. That makes something new and unique, so you know, and thank goodness for Bandrati and the super and new superintendent of the school this. That makes something new and unique. So, you know, and thank goodness for Ben Drati and the super, new superintendent of the school district. Cuz he's got the same goals that we've got. He wants kids to have this sort of modern education. He wants them to have the opportunity to succeed on their own merits and we're getting stuff done already. But we're gonna unleash, unleash such creative forces when we finally get this going and we've got such a supportive community. And we gotta change some of the stuff we do, like getting the fire education, right? It's perfect sense for us. Uh, like getting a, a skate park wouldn't be directly on the critical path, but getting our kids to be able to be them. Cuz Malibu's a huge skate community and skate and surf is adjacent and we gotta make sure that that's all taken care of. We've got a surf club, but it's not a surf team and I'm not close enough to it to know the details. But my understanding is the reason it's not a team is the insurance liability. Now for me, that's BS. We gotta, Malibu, you think Malibu, you think surf, right? We're great at water polo. We gotta be great at surf, we gotta embrace that, that's gotta be part of our school, it can't be tangential, it's gotta be right in there. So there's so many things that we gotta do, but how about this? There isn't a community that I can think of that is more equipped to be great at motion picture arts than Malibu, right? We got everybody from stars to directors to grips to stunt people, to sound people, to composers. Like, our community is hugely influenced by every aspect of making movies. So we've, there was just a kid who works with Shark TV who won one of these awards today. We need a great, like Hans Letz has done this amazing thing with KBO, he's created our own. Uh, radio station that has our own news, I mean, I think a lot of people turn to him when the.
Bring back KBO.
Uh, you know, when the, with the, with fires and stuff, so wouldn't it be amazing if we had a TV station run by the kids? Wouldn't it be amazing if we could make real movies by the kids and wouldn't it be amazing if high school kids can make a movie that goes, a lot of movies that go up to Sundance? Like, that should be something we do, show kids how this is your path, this is your opportunity. And whether you're a grip or whether you're this or that, it's your path, right? There's not just one way to succeed.
Way, more ways for kids to plug in.
Yeah.
All right, so we're moving forward. Oh, we've been going at seventy-two minutes. So Greg, well, I think we should wrap it up. I see the sunlight's doing its dance on your face. So we're, I think we should regroup on this and do this again. I fully enjoyed wrapping with you.
This was great, I always love talking.
And we'll get, we'll get into the spiritual stuff on the next one.
Great, I'll study up.
Uh, no, you just, we come from source, right?
Yeah, totally.
That's all it is, man.
Totally.
So that's Craig Foster, educator, Santa Monica School Board member, is it, what's, is it members member?
Member.
Don't get a bigger title than that, dude.
You know, when you're the one guy from Malibu on a seven-person board, that's pretty much the title you get.
I know, you fought hard to get on it too, geez, man. So it just goes to prove you can do anything you want, people, just uh, let's get active, plug into your local community, let's get some stuff done and um. That's it, you guys have a beautiful day out there and Craig.